Good evening. I'm calling to order the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, December 2nd, 2025 meeting in order. Ask Commissioner Malir to open us with the invocation, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. If you'll bow your head with me, please. Lord, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the county that we live in and all the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us here tonight as we make decisions that impact our neighbors and our community. Help us to make those decisions in wisdom and in truth. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Records show we have a full quorum of commissioners. You have the minutes from the November 18th, 2025 meeting in your packet. If you have reviewed them, I'll accept a motion to approve them.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept as presented.
Questions?
Second.
All favor raise your right hand. Agenda is set.
Yes, sir.
Have special recognition. Johnson, how are we going to work this?
We're just going to call up our emergency management agency, Sean Geronato and your team come up. And I think Connie's going to do the presentation.
That one's on. Oh, yeah, that one's on. All right. I have some very exciting news to share with you all today. Here, go ahead and hold that, as if you haven't seen it already. So we have in front of us today the folks from our emergency management department, and we are so proud of them. I got to spend a lot of time with them during the hurricane and learn what all goes on over there and really appreciate all the hard work that has gone into not only just hurricane stuff, but emergency management in general. And the department has been elevated so much in the past six years that you've been leading good, that we are so proud of it. And we have never been before had this kind of recognition, especially on this state level. So I have something I'd like to read to you all, to tell you about what has been going on over in Sean's department. Columbia County is a member of the Emergency Management Association of Georgia, Georgia's professional association of emergency managers. EMAG provides training and fosters the exchange of best practices to advance the mission of safeguarding lives and protecting property from natural, technological, and man-made hazards. At EMAG's fall conference this November, the Columbia County Emergency Management Agency was honored with Emergency Management Agency of the Year Award. Very big deal. This recognition was earned primarily for the agency's outstanding leadership and coordination in response to Hurricane Helene in September of 2024, when not only the EMA, but the partner departments across the county government mounted a highly coordinated, sustained response critical to Columbia County's recovery. While this award is formally presented to CCEMA, the director and staff emphasized receiving the award represents a countywide achievement. The response and recovery required extraordinary teamwork across departments, and the people involved exemplified Columbia County's core values of professionalism, respect, integrity, dedication, and excellence. So the Columbia County Board of Commissioners proudly recognizes the Columbia County Emergency Management Agency for being named Emergency Management Agency of the Year. Congratulations. And I'd also, I'd also like to recognize, I believe, Michael, our very own Michael Blanchard helped write this application. So thank you so much for your participation in all of the departments that made it possible. Will you please introduce to us your staff?
Right next to me, Sampson, Darren Loudon, Stamos, Brandon Witten, Suzie, Suzie Hughes, Stephanie Pilcher, and Bill Botham. She said everything. I got to tell you, going around the state and even around the United States, the biggest thing that people, that strikes people odd is that the support that we get from the commissioners and county management, apparently this doesn't happen everywhere. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, this award isn't for us, it's for you all. So thank you all for all your support. And then to every single group in the county, we wouldn't have this if it weren't for everybody. Everybody worked hard for this. So everybody deserves it. It's the culmination of 14 months of working that we're still working. But if we weren't a county that works together like we do, this wouldn't be possible. So thanks to everybody. A lot of goodies powders, yes. And wrecking your car through power lines. That was me. So that's all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Can we give a round of applause for these?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On to the consent agenda, commissioners. The consent agenda, item on this agenda has been through necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. Agree with them? I'll accept one motion to approve them all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all the items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Questions? All favor raise your right hand. Here he is. Onto the debate agenda. We've had one person asked to speak about the first issue, the If you would, just please state your name and address for the record. Take five minutes, sir.
Brian Barefoot, 3216 Ray Owens Road. Let me start off first by visiting the purpose of zoning ordinances. Zoning ordinances serve to regulate land use, promote public health, safety, and general welfare. They help to provide assurances to adjacent property and property owners that development will not negatively impact property values or impact quality of life. They should not be used to facilitate nor hinder development, whether it be commercial, residential, or in this case, industrial. They are a tool to ensure equitable outcomes for all parties involved. I ask those before me tonight. Does this ordinance as written provide equitable outcomes for all affected properties? As of now, residential properties on Morris Callaway and Shucraft Road will be directly impacted by this ordinance. Per the new countywide development guidance document being proposed, residents along Wrightsville Road could also be affected. Would you want to live in any of these residences? Would you want a data center next to your existing house with this ordinance as written? Let me digress for a minute. United States EPA identifies a 24-hour exposure level of 70 decibels as the maximum safe level of noise, which will prevent measurable hearing loss over a lifetime. Likewise, a continuous level of 55 decibels outdoors and 45 decibels indoors are identified as the maximum noise level to prevent activity interference and annoyance. These levels allow activities such as sleeping, working, and recreation to occur unimpeded. This current ordinance allows levels of 70 decibels at the property line well above these limits. Researching other data center ordinances throughout the United States, most set sound limits between 50 and 60 decibels at property lines. Other counties in Georgia currently drafting data center ordinances are proposing limits similar to these. Prince William County, Virginia, currently has 44 data centers in operation and 15 more under construction for a total combined square footage of 16 million square feet. Due to resident complaints, they are currently drafting a gold standard noise ordinance. This ordinance limits A-weighted decibels to 60 during the day and 55 at night. Also included is a C-weighted decibel requirement that measures the low-frequency noise. These low-frequency noises are described as a humming or buzz, which is generated by the large number of cooling fans and power supplies within these facilities. These noises can often be heard from miles away and are not as easily attenuated as A-weighted higher-frequency sounds. Prolonged exposure to these sounds has been attributed with sleep disturbances, stress, and anxiety. Prince William County's proposed ordinance is requiring a third-party assessment of these impacts and mitigation measures prior to site approval. On sites with multiple data centers, modeling is being proposed utilizing ISO 9613-2 for determining the cumulative effects of cooling systems and generators. Based on the experience of counties in Virginia and elsewhere, should our new ordinance not emulate theirs? Once these data centers are built, what teeth does the county have to alleviate complaints? If we were going to take the time to create this ordinance, we should do it right the first time. If the developer is assured that their noise levels will not approach the 70-decibel range, what harm is there in providing a lower threshold? Remember, this ordinance is intended to assure quality of life for those residents, current and future, that have to live next to the data centers. I have seen no guarantee in writing that prevents more of these being proposed throughout the county. In conclusion, I want to share a phrase I try to live my life by: deeds not words. Let your actions speak louder than your words. If you truly want to preserve the quality of life of the people that have to live next to these data centers, vote to revise this ordinance. If you yourself would not want one next door with these guidelines, why would you approve it for fellow Columbia County residents? Thank you.
I'm not mentioning the actual zoning ordinance, but I am talking about data centers. Susan Warren, Appling. The main item on that agenda, not is that data center ordinance second reading. Those of you who have attended regularly know that I feel the water consumption of data centers is unsustainable and new power will be too costly. In June, I had questions and issues about the usage spelled out in the DRI submitted to the state. Now, while I stand firmly with those Appling residents whose properties are directly affected so direly by this white oak technology park, those issues don't affect me in the same ways. My concern is how these data center projects being proposed and built all over the state and the nation will affect my and everyone else's children and grandchildren in years to come. With details derived from legitimate and knowledgeable resources, I've discussed data center developers flocking to Georgia for reasons like cheap land and power compared to national averages, tax incentives given by some counties, and how the Georgia legislature declines to protect residential customers by failing to enact laws that would prevent costs of new generation and transmission projects being passed on to us through, sorry, is this in the right place? Through increases in our power bills. Six such increases we've had in the last three years. And about how just two projects, our White Oak project and the Bartow County project totaled 17 million-plus square feet, and even just one of these two would use more power than one of the four reactors that Plant Vogel can produce. And it was recently confirmed to me that Cloverleaf Developers is already working on a project in our county. I've spoken about the huge costs and long waits it will take to build more generation and transmission projects. Until I researched this information, I didn't realize power companies make their profit from the building of infrastructures, not the power they sell. So if they overbuild infrastructure, the presidents have to pay for it. Georgia Power's profit increased 22% in 2024 to $2.5 billion. The PSC customers allowed Georgia Power to receive 11.9% profit yearly and voted for the same for the next three years. Most states' power companies are allowed between 8 and 9% profit. I've spoken several times about the largest power grid operator in the U.S., both by number of states and number of data centers. That's PJM Interconnections. It was reported in November that PJM passed $4.4 billion of new transmission upgrades to residents in seven of their member states. Recently, governors of 11 of the states in their consortium have threatened to withdraw from them if they continue to operate with business as Now, on November 27th, analysts along with PSC staff warned in written testimony that residential customers could see monthly power bills jump $20 or more if the PSC allows the utility to complete the historic expansion it has proposed to support an influx of data centers. Instead, PSC staff recommend in filings that for now, the commission should approve only about one-third of the new power capacity the company has proposed. To date, the analysts say only a fraction of the 10 gigawatts the company has asked to build is backed up by signed contract. The rest is speculative and exposes customers to the risk of stranded costs if the anticipated load does not materialize, Robert Trokey, the PSC's electric section director, and outside consultants wrote in their combined testimony. But just as quickly as data centers say they need these buildings, many are canceling contracts or going to other states. The staff pointed out this has already happened in Georgia. What's more, the PSC staff said the evidence shows that so far, Georgia Power's aggressive forecasts have overestimated electricity demands from data centers. This could definitely leave existing customers stuck paying for those power plants, electricity contracts, and grid upgrades. Georgia Power has disagreed that the demand is speculative. Company spokesperson pointed to a document filed Friday that the portfolio of large customers who have committed to receiving electricity service from the utility has grown to 11,000 megawatts. Notice that statement says committed, not signed. Even our project is just committed, not yet signed. The PSC vote will be on December 19th, prior to the installation of the two new commissioners. A 30-day delay in the vote was requested so these new commissioners you chose could vote, but it was denied. Isn't it such a coincidence that the sale of the White Oak property to the data center developer is to be finalized on that same date? Thank you.
Ms. Warren, the infrastructure has to be paid by the end user. So, that's from the rules that were passed by the PSC back in January. So the end user has to pay for all the infrastructure. You made a reference to certain states where also the reverence to the signing. End user has 30 days, trying to get my dates right. They have December 19th to close, but on whatever day they were notified by Georgia Power, I don't know the exact day, they have 30 days to sign a contract with Georgia Power, the end user does, which requires them to pay for all upfront costs and to subject themselves to 15 years of payments for the power. So there are, ours may not be signed yet, but there's a lot of structure in place supposed to be. Tracy, Ms. Tracy?
And I have never talked in this capacity, although I was a teacher for a long time in Columbia County. I want to say thank you, especially to Allison Couch, who answered my husband's email in a very timely manner about last week, I believe it was. I have a personal request, and I just want you to know me as a person who represents myself, my family, but there are a lot of people that feel the way I do. My husband and I were both born in Atlanta, Georgia, although we didn't know each other then. And then our families diverged different ways. And somehow, we both came back to this area, the CSRA. His father served in World War II, like many of our fathers did, and retired teaching at MCG. He never lived in Appling, although he bought the property that we now live on. When my husband was a teenager in the 1970s, he and his other two brothers would go out in clear trees because the property was heavily wooded. And an uncle went in and they bought adjacent property. Well, Uncle Bill McKeegan ended up building out there, but Guy, who did live to be 97, but as a young man, he had his first heart attack out there clearing the property. He was fine and lived a long time afterwards, but he decided he wasn't going to, you know, live that far from the hospital. So the land was just somewhere we would go, like for my daughter's first fishing experience, or my husband would hunt, or if there was a wonderful meteor shower, we would leave our home in Martinez and head out, get in the back of the old truck with some hot chocolate and watch the sky. It's a very special place to us, especially the back. The front had been pulped, clearly cut by family before we moved out, and I know what that does to the land. The back could not be pulped because of its steepness, and there's a Springfield pond back there that protected it. And the trees back there are lovely, old. Even though Helene came in and did its number back there, there are still many. And I worry. I worry about the quality of our life and how it's going to change because although we are on White Oak Road, our property runs back not that far from Morris Callaway. And I'm afraid that the water, which we have, is very shallow. When we put our well in, I know this because you paid by the foot, and we did it the cheap way, which was to pay, you know, some amount upfront. And we would have been better off to have paid by the foot, but we didn't take the gamble. And because of the water level being so high, any contaminants in the area is going to severely affect our sandy soil. We have tree frogs galore. Tree frogs only live in areas with pure water. I love that we live in that atmosphere. I love that I can walk down to the pond and see a family of geese visiting at any time. I love that I can go out and see deer, raccoon, possums, that I can have 40 chickens, two dogs, and two calves. My neighbors have rescue horses. Other neighbors, you know, have just beautiful landscape yards that they've designed back in the woods. You would never know it was there because you can't see it from the road. So my husband and father both worked at SRS, and my husband traveled a great distance to live where we live. He built our house. He's not a builder. We contracted it out ourselves. But after working a whole day for like two years, he would go out to build a house that I would love. And I do love it. It was one that I'd hoped that we would pass down to generations, to my family. Now, I worry that our way of life is going to end because of noise, pollution. I worry about animals that are displaced. And I hope that, although it is not my choice to have a data center, an AI data center especially, and I understand that there are supposedly new ways of making them much better than in Luden County and other areas where we hear horror stories about, but I would like to have some kind of way of having some kind of proof that we are going, if we are going to have this happen against my will, that it is done in a manner that makes it the most ecologically friendly and viable solution to our situation, one that we could be proud of the whole country over. And I hope that we can have studies brought in from perhaps University of Georgia, extension agencies, the forestry department, the Savannah River keeper, to maintain that our water is not being polluted, that the noise will not be a problem. And I hope personally that because people like Trammell Crowe are coming in, that they would put in efforts for reforestation to help keep green spaces alive. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you for coming to speak with us. I very much enjoyed speaking with your husband the other night. He was very pleasant to talk to, and I learned a lot about your family and where you live. And I just want to reassure you that we are trying to do everything we can in this ordinance to protect your wells and protect you from the noise. I also have a well, and I know a lot of folks in our district do have wells. And so the ordinance is not going to allow well drilling by the data centers, which will protect the water table and the aquifer. And then the noise ordinance section will, the level there is 70 decibels. And so we're hopeful that that will also protect surrounding citizens from any noise pollution. But thank you for coming tonight and speaking with us.
I know the drill. And, Mr. Chairman, before I start into my speak, if you had engaged people in this community like you should, you would know more about the PSC rules, you would know more about what they cover and what they don't cover. I ran for the PSC. I know fully what they're going to cover and what they're not going to cover. They only cover what's at the building. A person that builds a building normally pays for their infrastructure in the building anyhow. They're not going to pay for the generation. They're not going to pay for the execution. And all of that is going to get put onto the taxpayers.
I respectfully disagree with you.
Well, you can respectfully disagree, but I have sent you a lot of disinformation that if you'd have read it, you would understand it. First of all, I want to start out with a quote this evening, is I think the currency of leadership is transparency. You've got to be truthful. I don't think you should be vulnerable every day, but there are moments where you've got to share your soul and conscience with people and show them who you are and not be afraid of it. Ms. Couch, I'd appreciate a lot of times if you'd respond to my emails, respond to my texts, and respond to my phone calls. Chairman and commissioners, tonight I'm speaking not just to the five of you, but to everyone in this room, everyone watching online, and everyone in Columbia County who has been shut out of the most consequential decisions in our county's modern history. For a year and a half, this board has been moving forward with massive land sales, high-dollar financial deals, and a blueprint for what will become the single largest development in Columbia County. And you have done it in deliberate, sustained, and strategic secrecy. You blamed it on the non-disclosure agreements, but let's be honest, NDAs do not force you to hide the process. NDAs did not force you to rush. NDAs did not force you to lock the public out. Secrecy was your choice. Speed was your choice. And shutting out the citizens was absolutely your choice. While you were making those choices, you were simultaneously signlining Vision 2035, the plan the citizens created together. You replaced a public vision with a private one crafted by a small internal group with only one weekday open house that almost no working citizen could attend. That wasn't transparency. That was just theater. Meanwhile, while families were rebuilding from a hurricane that devastated this county, you advanced the largest land decisions in decades quietly and without true public involvement. And let's talk about access. For months, citizens, including myself and organized groups, have For months, citizens, including myself and organized groups, have asked to meet with you. We have asked for clarity, for answers, and for the opportunity to understand what you were committing this county to. And you refused. You delayed, you deflected. You told us, someone will schedule it. You told us, if I'm available, I'll participate. That is not leadership, that is not representation. And when elected officials repeatedly refuse to meet with people they serve, especially during the largest public decisions in decades, it starts to look a whole lot like repression. And you know another truth. You know most citizens cannot afford the enormous cost of filing lawsuits or fighting the county's decisions in court. You know that the average taxpayer doesn't have tens of thousands of dollars to challenge you. And because you know that, you've continued pushing this process forward full speed despite calls to pause, to reevaluate, or to simply speak honestly with the public. Now, let's talk about financial promises. We keep hearing that this development will bring massive tax revenue, but the truth is something you don't talk about. You cannot promise a penny of that revenue because the Economic Development Authority, an organization this board does not control, gives away those taxes through abatements and incentives, meaning this historic revenue you've been selling to the public may never arrive. And there's more. If any area incorporates as a city, there will be zero franchise fees from the power used by this development. Documents already reveal that all the major power consumption will be behind the meter. No franchise fees, no revenue. But citizens get every burden: stormwater runoff, massive infrastructure costs, environmental impacts, long-term landscape change. And to add insult to injury, the person leading this entire process is preparing to retire once the groundwork is set, leaving the citizens to carry the consequences for decades after the architects of this plan have moved on. This project will reshape Columbia County for generations. It will affect our water, our roads, our taxes, our power grid, our schools, and our daily lives, and the citizens have been locked out from the very beginning. So tonight, with a full room and with the public listening, I am calling for this board to stop. Slow the process down, bring every piece of it into the light. I hold real public meetings at real hours where real citizens can attend. Explain what you've signed, what you promised, and what you planned, and what you've concealed. Because right now, the people of Columbia County are not being represented, they are just being managed. They are being maneuvered, they are being misled. Leadership is not measured by how you can hide or how fast you can push a deal through. Leadership is measured by whether you honor the people who put you in those seats. Right now, you have broken that trust, but you will have a chance right now to fix it if you choose to do so. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, I thought you were here for the library. Come on up, Howard.
Howard Johnson, 252 Silver Maple Road. I'm not a wealthy man, but I do pay attention to large financial things. At market close today, Nvidia had a market cap of about $4.5 trillion. Nvidia, their primary business is creating GPUs, which are used heavily in data centers, cryptocurrency mining and computing. Essentially, you can say that they're the ones selling shovels in this AI gold rush. So Nvidia, with a market cap of $4.5 trillion at market close today, compared to the S&amp;P 500 total, with a total market cap of about $57 trillion. So this one company that has exploded in valuation over the past decade due to being involved in this, you know, currently hot market, represents 8% of the S&amp;P 500. That is a massive overweighting in a single company. If we expand this to all tech companies, so we're including Facebook, Google, et cetera, we're looking at about 30% of the S&amp;P 500 is just directly in these big tech companies.
70% of the S&amp;P value over the last.
That's right, and I'll get to why this matters. As I said, I'm not a wealthy man. I own one individual stock, that's Altria, the tobacco distribution company that I used to give my money away to. And outside of that, I'm fully invested in broad market in my retirement fund. My concern here is that these massive gains in the market as a whole have been driven by big tech, and I do believe that this represents a bubble. To say that one company represents 8% of the 500 largest companies in the country is obscene to me. I simply can't believe that valuation. It's greater than the entire GDP of Japan. And so if you're gonna tell me that one company that produces one thing has more value than the entire output of one of the highest tech-focused countries in the world, that's obscene. So my concern here is, I am already overly exposed to big tech in my retirement account. Most people in this room are, unless they're holding mostly cash and cash equivalents. If you're invested in the market, you're heavily exposed to tech. So my concern is, when this bubble pops, and I do believe that this is a when, not if situation, right? These valuations cannot be upheld. The market crashes, people like me lose our jobs, and then if our county is financially tied to this data center project, we will also lose a significant chunk of the county's revenue on top of the greater economic collapse that will be coming with the bubble popping. So my concern there is that if the board moves forward with the plan to ease my property taxes by collecting, you know, the various different taxes that are available at this data center project, we're going to be reliant on that and not on the people of Columbia County. So when the market goes, not only is my retirement account gonna disappear, not only am I gonna lose my job, but all of a sudden, my county is gonna be wildly underfunded and need to go back to saying, hey, where are our taxpayers? How can we fund the services that we need? I think we've already got too many eggs in one basket, and moving forward with these data center projects continues to heap all of our, all of our eggs in the same basket. Sorry, it felt a little silly using these same aphorism twice in a row, but that's my main concern. I've been here to speak about the library before. You've heard me say diversity is our strength. That's true in investments as well, right? If you're looking at a single market and putting all of our economic prosperity into one single market, that is massively increasing the risk to all of us. I think that rather than focusing on big tech data centers, we need to look at the people of Columbia County. You see, I'm fairly alone here. My nearest blood relative lives about 600 miles away, yet I have never felt alone. I have always had folks that I would consider family here in Columbia County. I have not had a holiday meal alone. I've always had somebody invite me over. I didn't go through the hurricane alone, right? My neighborhood came together. I've seen the strength of the people of Columbia County. That's who I want to be reliant on, not some big tech CEO. You see, I've been coming to these meetings for a while, and I've seen a lot of people stand here where I'm at, and, you know, they try to add weight to their statement by saying, "Over the course of my life, I've paid $1 million in taxes." It's a natural thing, right, that we pay into how this county is run and so feel that we should have a say. My concern is, when you have a large tech company that's able to come in here and say, "Well, we paid $118 million in taxes, so let's talk about what the county can do for us," that there's gonna be additional pressure on the board, whoever it may be at that time, to bow and kowtow to the needs of big tech rather than the needs of the citizens. I think we're moving forward too fast, and the thing is, if I'm wrong about this being a bubble with AI, there's nothing wrong with slowing down a little bit, right? If the bubble never pops, that land will be more valuable to build data centers on 10 years from now than it is today. So there's nothing wrong with waiting a little bit, further evaluating, and making sure that we're moving forward in a way that is beneficial to everybody in Columbia County. That's all I've got for tonight. I'll see y'all in two weeks.
Howard, reference to the waiting, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a legal obligation to follow through with contracts that have been let. To that degree, we are where we are.
I tend to agree. My one concern with that, though, Mr. Duncan, is I have seen you tell citizens, "I guess you'll have to sue us," when they came to complain about how the county has managed land easements. The gentleman in question, I had a little trouble understanding, that was at the May 6 meeting, Mr. Ling, who you told that he'll just have to sue you.
Thank you, Ron. If you go back to the record, I've never told somebody.
I'll bring that up to you in two weeks on the video. So I do find it a little strange that you deflect with, well, this opens us up to potential legal matters.
Actually, I'm not deflecting. When we started the whole process, Alan Wyatt, I told Alan flat out, I said, "We're not gonna delay, we're not gonna pause. This process has been put in place, we're working our way through it." And so, if anything, you can consider me a man of my word because I said we would not vote to change, we would not vote to delay, and I've held true to that.
Right, and I'm using this time to say that I think you should delay, right? We've got one project coming through that's already zoned S1, and that's gonna be built, right? I believe there's no stopping it, I'm not here to say that. I'm saying that we can slow down and reevaluate this particular zoning ordinance because as far as I know, there's not another one up on the docket soon, right? There's no need to rush through zoning more property for data center usage, especially until we've.
Establish a zoning ordinance for a specific piece of property, although the large piece will be rolled into this.
So, if I may, just ask one more clarifying question and then I'll yield for real. Mr. Johnson, you told me that this ordinance reflects essentially the restrictions that are on the S1 zoning for the White Oaks project. So when that project is rezoned from S1 to DC, is that gonna be like an automatic rollover or will it also require a vote? I understand that ultimately this is, you know, a pen and paper difference, that the land is still zoned for that use regardless of if it's called S1 or DC, right? Like, I'm not.
It requires a vote.
Okay, so it will require a vote at that point to bring everything in, because I do agree with if you're gonna have data centers to have it codified rather than S1 and done, you know, willy-nilly there. We're on the same page there. I just wanted to understand the process moving forward, so, thank you.
Thanks, Howard.
Do you have a motion in our future?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 25-07, Chapter 90, Zoning, Article 3, Commercial, Industrial, Professional, Special, Planned Unit Development and Planned Development Districts, Section 90-97 Allowed Uses. Section 90-98, List of Lot and Structure Requirements, and establishing Section 90-101 DC Data Center District. Article 4, Supplemental Requirements, Section 90-139, Buffers and Screening, and Section 90-147, Use Provisions.
Question? Is a motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to the next item, Commissioner.
Yes, I make a motion to approve resolution number 25-40. Second.
This is a resolution. The Columbia County Board of Education is requesting to issue bonds. This is a result of voter approval, and part of the process of them issuing bonds requires the governing body of the county to approve this. So essentially, this is a pass-through for us. The county's not responsible, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners is not responsible for paying these bonds, it's all on the Board of Education. But this is a request from them and the resolution that corresponds with it.
Help me understand, Chris. Why does the Board of, vote on Board of Education?
Because a state statute requires you to. Didn't, I would assume the Board of Ed could file an action, aim is to force you to, been approved by the voters.
Motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve the request for variance to Section 90-135 for property located at Tax Map 072A, Parcel 068, to allow additional building signage. Second.
So this is for the new ER that opened today, I believe. They used up all their allowable signage when they put their doctor's hospital and emergency in, they're asking for a variance to add the ER in the upper left corner.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor, on favor, raise your, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the request for the rezoning from C2 to S1 for property located at Tax Map 024, Parcell 004A, and a portion of 003 for a proposed RV and boat storage facility, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 20th, 2025 Planning Commission Report.
This request is to go from C2 to S1, it will be a split zone parcel. One of the conditions is that the new plat has to be filed separating the C2 from the S1. If approved, this would allow them a maximum of 300,000 square feet of storage under roof. This is a mixture of enclosed and covered storage. A single build would not exceed 25,000 square feet. Concept plan here, they're showing a maximum of 10 structures. The applicant has noted that once they do their engineering, they may have to shift the location, size, and placement. The setbacks will follow C3, which will be 125 foot from the center line, 30-foot side setbacks from, I'm sorry, from properties, and 20-foot setbacks from the remaining property that will stay. Staff has actually, has added condition, if approved, that all drive aisles and parking areas will have to be paved, 20-foot landscapes trip would have to be, uh, all along Washington Road. Answer any questions?
Any other questions? Motion second, or on favor, raise your right hand. Close.
I make a motion to approve the request for the master sign plan for property located at Tax Map 050, Parcel 002E, subject to the condition enumerated in the November 20th, 2025 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
So when this property was rezoned a few years ago, one of the conditions was that it had to have a master sign plan brought back to this body for approval. You have this master sign plan in front of you. For the most part, it follows what the county sign ordinance already states. They did show a sign eye in your upper left corner, signs on one parcel, that is outside of what the county code states. Staff is asking that sign eye not be included in the master plan. There are monument signs, inscription there, I'd be happy to answer that.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve the request for the major S1 revision for property located at Tax Map 072, Parcel 207, for additional proposed buildings. Second.
Bossman, they're asking to add some additional structures on this site. This is the church up here on North Bel Air Road. They're asking to replace a structure that was damaged during Helene, that'll be a maintenance structure. They're also asking to put a proposed maintenance building and a future material storage structure. None of the buffers changed, it just adds these buildings to their site plan.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor, on favor, raise your.
I make a motion to approve the request for the rezoning from R2 to RA for property located off Hamilton Road on a portion of Tax Map 052, Parcel 037, with the condition that an approved and recorded subdivision plat creating separate tax ID parcels for each zoning district will be filed with planning services.
This property is currently zoned R2. The developer has had quite a time trying to figure out how to make this project work. Teresa, if you'll go to the concept plan. The area you see here, the lots on the southern part of the property, they're looking to rezone that area from R2 back to RA. So these will be a minimum of 2.5-acre lots to kind of fit the feel of Hamilton Road. They will be bringing sewer to these lots as well as the rest of the R2 area.
I can't hear.
Yeah.
Thank you for having me. My name is Micah Sykes. I'm representing Houston Homes in place of Tyler Finley this evening. He did ask me to apologize on his behalf for not being here. Our address is 6053 Veterans Parkway, Suite 31, Columbus, Georgia. First of all, staff did an amazing job of laying out the project. Not sure we could have done it better. With that said, there's not much I can add, but I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have or any concerns the public may raise.
Tony, you have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you.
Motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Matters or requests by committee? Karen Parham?
Good evening. Karen Parham, 3421 Hilltop Trail. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I'm going to be briefed tonight as I'm getting more into holiday mode at this point, which apparently includes bleeding. I didn't bleed on my bread, though, so that's good. This happened during cleanup. So, yeah, I almost thought I wasn't going to be able to make it, but I stopped bleeding, so that's good. So as many of you know, and I stated recently at a library board meeting, I wear several different hats in the community. So when I speak on behalf of an organization, I always run those comments through that organization's executive committee. So I'm speaking tonight in my individual capacity, though I will reference information that has come to me through my work with Freedom to Read Coalition of Columbia County. So as we look forward to the new Columbia County library system in January of 2026, I've been thinking a lot about what a strong foundation should look like. So as a side note, I do want to give a shout out to the county's responsiveness on the civic group meeting policy in the library. I won't get into the details of that, but that was a constructive step forward. And it showed that solutions are possible when concerns are taken seriously. And I really do appreciate that. At the same time, though, I'm also concerned that the age-based shelving guidelines remain in place with no clear content-neutral professionally-grounded collection development policy scheduled to replace them. If January 1st arrives and no new policy is finalized, then these guidelines, which have been incredibly divisive and confusing, effectively become the default foundation of the entire new library system. That is not a sustainable or unifying starting point. I also need to mention an issue that has been causing some anxiety for many patrons. The book Gender Queer recently went missing from the Evans Branch again. So it last disappeared in March. Freedom to Read donated a replacement copy just to ensure continued access. Just yesterday, though, another patron contacted Freedom to Read to report that a different LGBTQ title had also disappeared. Now, I'm not assigning blame. Books go missing for all kinds of reasons, right? With the recent large staff turnover, shelving changes, or a simple human error, materials can easily be misplaced or fall behind shelves. However, when specific groups of patrons already feel that books which represent them are under heightened scrutiny, and then multiple titles from that same category repeatedly go missing, it naturally raises concerns. Now, stealing library materials is a misdemeanor under Georgia law, which I'm not accusing anyone of. Whether these books were intentionally taken or simply lost in the shuffle, the perception of vulnerability in this community is real, and those perceptions matter. So with that in mind, I do encourage the county to consider strengthening security measures at all three libraries. At the end of the day, public libraries are meant to serve everyone, not just the most politically connected or even those that hold a majority opinion. And libraries work best when parents guide their own children and trained professionals guide the collection, not when politicians try to step into either of those roles. My hope for the new year is that Columbia County chooses to build a library system worthy of the people who depend on it because our community deserves nothing less. Thank you.
Karen, did you check to see if the books were checked out?
So the book Gender Queer was actually, I knew it was missing because when I, that's a title I look up frequently, just to make sure it's still there. So since it's been missing before. And I noticed it was missing on pines. So I then went to the library, and it wasn't on the shelf. And I asked a library staff member, and they looked it up, and it's been missing since October 5th. So on my end, as a user, as a patron, it doesn't show it as missing in the system. You have to actually have library staff look it up. The other title was just discovered. So the individual who contacted me was able to put a hold on it, but it still shows it as available on the system, but the library staff couldn't find it, so...
Is the other title?
I would have to look that up for you. It's Manga, so it's a little weird.
Thank you.
Executive session items?
I make a motion to approve $2,500 to Echo Riverwood LLC, Parcel 065900, to obtain a temporary easement for the Washington Road and Williamview Parkway intersection improvements project.
Accept the easement for us to add additional through lanes on Washington Road at the Williamview intersection.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve resolution number 25-41, Parcel 060046. Resolution number 25-42, Parcel 060043A. Resolution number 25-43, Parcel 067122Z. Resolution number 25-44, Parcel 072B050. Resolution number 25-45, Parcel 072A348, Declaration of Taking an Order of Condemnation for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Let Mr. Driver address these.
So all of these, with the exception of the Crawford Creek HOA, are situations where we were in the middle of negotiating, trying to come to a consensus on how much to pay and what to do. And the other side stopped communicating. Some over money, some over how they wanted breaks in medias like. So because we weren't able to reach out to them repeatedly, we have a condemnation on the Crawford Creek. That is a, her legal ability to the county. She's with that, it would require a supermajority vote of homeowners, which is possible to do. They were moving forward with a condemnation. Some would call this a friendly condemnation because we have an agreement with them.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to accept the roads' rights-of-way and easements as depicted on the plat prepared by Jakin's Land Surveying dated February 22nd, 2022. Parcel A, labeled as the sanitary sewer pump station on a plat prepared by Jakin Land Surveying dated November 20th, 2025. And the detention pond parcels labeled as A, B, and C on a plat prepared by Jakin's Land Surveying dated November 26th, 2025.
They're all roads, storm easements, sanitary sewer, waterline easements, and detention pond easements built by the Development Authority that we are taking ownership of.
Motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve $59,000 to Tina Carroll, Parcel 072J062, and $10,200 to Waterford Community Association, Inc., Parcel 072J187, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Second.
They're all standard negotiations for the Hereford Farm project. This gets 94% complete.
Questions? Second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. One more motion that needs to be made?
I make a motion to adjourn.